Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I want to welcome you all to our city council meeting on today, September the ninth. I want to acknowledge all of the citizens who have shown up tonight, also our city staff, who is present with us today, invited guests. Thank you all for being here. In addition to that, I want to take a moment to acknowledge our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our city attorney, Ms. Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. Of course, I want to take this time to also acknowledge my colleagues on council. Thank you all for being here tonight. And if all minds are clear, let's stand for the invocation by the Reverend Sylvester Colvin of Emmanuel AME Church. Sir, you have the floor, and follow the invocation will be the pledge of allegiance.
Let us all assume the posture of prayer. Gracious and eternal God, we gather this evening mindful of your presence and your grace. God, we thank you for the privilege of serving the people of this city. We ask that you would breathe wisdom in this chamber, breathe clarity, courage into this chamber. May the conversations and the debate, the decisions of this council mark not only by policy, but be marked by purpose and procedure, not only by procedure, but also by passion. Lord, let the politic and the passion expressed in this place match the plight and the perplexities of the citizens of this great city. Remind us that the voices we hear and the concerns we weigh and the choices made ripple beyond the walls of this place. And, Lord, let these decisions and these contemplations reach the families which we serve. Stir up in all of us the imagination to craft solutions and the complex problems. Help us to express the humility, to listen deeply to one another. Where there is disagreement, grant understanding. Where there is division, grant reconciliation. And where there is despair, grant renewed hope. Unite leaders and communities alike so that we may labor together for justice, for opportunity, and for the flourishing of all who call this city home, the place we love. We pray now that you will let this be so in your name. We pray through the graces you give. Amen. And amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you again, Reverend Colvin, for that prayer. I would now ask my colleagues on council to please note your attendance electronically.
Seven members of city council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have the minutes of a called meeting on August 25th, 2025, a called meeting on August 26th, 2025, and a regular meeting on August 26th, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
Please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We're now moving to our city council speaker rules. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker rules?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now moving to our agenda item, public hearings. Item 25-252, Public Hearing on Honorary Street Designation and Use Permit Applications. Item A. Madam Clerk, would you please read Item A, the resolution we are considering for this public hearing?
Yes, sir. Innovation District Resolution granting the request of M. Hill for an honorary street name designation to designate a portion of King Street between Chestnut Street and Elm Avenue as Dr. Milton R. Blunt Way in recognition of Dr. Milton R. Blunt's contribution to the city of Portsmouth. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation. Planning Commission recommends approval. The actual resolution reads, "A resolution designating an honorary street name of Dr. Milton R. Blunt Way for the portion of King Street located between Chestnut Street and Elm Avenue."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present? If you would come forward, ma'am, please state your name and address, and you will
Good evening to our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our mayor, Shannon Glover, Vice Mayor, Will Moody, other council members and staff assembled. I'm Marilyn Y. Hill. I reside at five Cosby Court here in the city of Portsmouth, and I stand before you on behalf of New Mount Olivet Baptist Church that the Mount Olivet Church was founded in 1922 by Dr. Clegg and T. Sumville to request an honorary street naming for the fourth pastor, Dr. Milton R. Blunt, who served our ministry for 35 years as a pillar of strength and guidance, formed the church into a center for the community and outreach, along with empowerment. Reverend Dr. Blunt founded and led numerous youth membership programs nurturing generations of leaders, scholars, and citizens. Reverend Dr. Blunt initiated GED programs, after-school tutoring, enrichment programs given under-resourced youth access to academic support and life skills training. Reverend Dr. Milton R. Blunt advocated for social justice and equality, served as voice for the voiceless, a bridge between city leadership and underserved communities. He embraced and supported candidates, city council, and school board to share their views to move the city forward. A few of Reverend Dr. Milton R. Blunt's affiliations are past president of the Tyre Water Metro Ministers Conference, the Sharon Missioner Association, and allied bodies, past president of the Victory Square Senior Apartments, the Martin Luther King Jr. Leadership Steering Committee, church and community in action. As you see, the portion of King Street is between Chestnut and Elm Avenue. There would be no residents affected. The senior complexes are the fever's and county street addresses in which citizens will use. And the vacant lot to the left is owned by Mr. Alvin Kills, who gave his blessings for this request. Supporting this request and the honoring of the naming of Dr. Milton R. Blunt Way, present standing with me is our interim pastor, Dr. Cordell Patillo, church members, local pastors, and community leaders. And I would like for those who are present to stand. The honorary destination would serve as a visible and lasting tribute to a man who gave selfishly to uplift and promote unity, service, and education in our community. And it is our prayer that this request be granted, and I thank you for your consideration and allowing me this time. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for the applicant? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. You are not required to sign up in order to come speak on this public hearing item. If you do decide to come up and speak, you will state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Ms. Hill did an amazing job. My name is Dr. Cordell Patillo, interim pastor of New Mount Olivet Baptist Church. Ms. Hill did an amazing job, but I just wanted to also echo some of her statements and say that one of the hallmarks of Pastor Blunt's life was his compassion for those in grief in our city. When families were bereaved and had no church to turn to, Pastor Blunt opened the doors of New Mount Olivet Baptist Church. He provided a sanctuary for mourning, a place of dignity, and a reminder that in the most difficult times, no one should ever have to walk alone. Renaming a portion of King Street in his honor is more than a symbolic gesture. It's a testimony to a man who embodied what it means to be a servant leader and ensures that generations to come will know that right here in Portsmouth stood a pastor, a community leader, and a humble man with a genuine heart, whose life made a lasting difference. King Street itself bears a name that reminds us of leadership, sacrifice, and service. How fitting that we will honor Dr. Milton R. Blunt along that same very path, a man who, like King, gave his life to service for others. On behalf of New Mount Olivet Baptist Church, our friends and our family, the many lives touched by Pastor Blunt's ministry and leadership, I respectfully urge you to support this renaming. Let us inscribe his legacy not just in our hearts, but also in the very streets of this city he loved and served so well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, city manager, all council members. My name is Pamela Wilkins, and I live out of Westbury Community. And I come to stand and say I'm in agreement with naming the street after Reverend Blunt. He was very helpful when the Westbury Civic League just started. He allowed us to come to the church and have our meetings. And once we got big enough that it was too small, we had to find someone else. But he's been a very active person in the Westbury community, doing what he could to help us out and all. So I'm in agreement with naming the street after him because he's done great work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm Arnette D. Love-McSwain, one of your school board members and also the niece of Pastor Milton R. Blunt. I come before you because everybody can tell you what he did on the public side. I want to tell you what he did personally as a family member, what I was taught as I worked under him, what I witnessed from him. My uncle was a selfless man. I mean, everything he did, he did for the city, for the citizens. I mean, anything that he can do, he would go out his way to do it. I mean, he was giving money to people out of his pockets, had me doing the same thing. Now, y'all that know me know that's something. So, I mean, he was a person that would always give his very last. And a lot of people can't say that. And I think I spoke before when I said when I used to work directly for him. We would do all of the funerals for the individuals that did not have church homes, that did not have the money to hire a pastor or have a venue for their church. We would do the funerals if they needed to use the overflow area where additional church was, fellowship hall. He would arrange that at no charge. And this is the type of person he was. He would also, you know, weddings and everything as well. He was always the type of person that would go and do things that a lot of people wouldn't do without a monetary value attached to it. Even though I tried to get him to attach a monetary value against a lot of things, that's when my lesson came in because he made sure that I knew that everything that we did as servants, we could not charge. And so for me to stand here before you is a big deal, for most of you know. But what's right is right, and what's earned is earned. And I know that Pastor Milton R. Blunt, my uncle, Dr. Milton R. Blunt, has really earned this legacy, to be able to have at least a portion of what he served the most at New Mount Olivet Baptist Church, named in his honor. So I'm asking you to please consider this. Take away anything that is not valid in your decision and base it on the service that he gave to the people of Portsmouth for all those many years. I thank you in advance.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
My name is Claudette Blunt. I'm Milton's Blunt wife. I live 4,600 Stackhorn Drive in Virginia Beach, Virginia. I am here to say thank you for even allowing this to come forth. I'm here to say that Pastor Blunt, my husband, loved the city of Portsmouth. He grew up here. He pastored his home church where he grew up in, and he gave his all and all to the city of Portsmouth. He is a hard worker. He was. He was a hard worker. He is dearly, dearly missed. But at the same time, we will be looking up at a street sign every time we go to New Mount Olivet that says, "Dr. Milton R. Blunt's Way," because he gave so much to this city. He loved this city. Nothing, nothing ever stood in his way. I used to say to him all the time, "I think you live in Portsmouth because you never at home." But he was always here doing the job, working to make sure the citizens of Portsmouth and his congregation was always justified with righteousness and made sure that they got everything that they needed, even when he had to go in his own pocket. Thank you for letting me speak this time. Thank you to the city of Portsmouth, and thank you to the city council for just allowing this to come forth. Yes, he is dearly missed, but he put a mark on this city that will never be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have a comment?
You have the floor.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to comment. I was going to recognize First Lady Claudette Blunt before she spoke, and Kayden and Crystal. It's a pleasure to see you all here, and interim pastor Cordell Patillo. I just want to personally say I am proud to vote for this honorary street naming for Dr. Milton Blunt. A lot of times, you know, we have a, the saying in Portsmouth is, "We have a church on every corner," right? But it's so impactful when those churches are an integral part of the community, and that's what Pastor Blunt made sure his church was. Anyone in that community, surrounding community in Portsmouth knew that the doors of that church were open to anyone at any time. And Pastor Blunt just wasn't a faith leader. He was a community leader as well. So I'm proud to vote yes for this street renaming, honorary street renaming. So thank you so much.
Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
There's people in this world that have passion, and there's other people that really have passion. And the people that have extreme passion, like Pastor Blunt did, you either very much agree with them or you very much disagree. But they contribute so much to our society. And this was a man of passion. I don't know that there's any of us in this room that had the passion that that man had for the city of Portsmouth. So, yes, my vote's yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, once again, this is a public hearing. If you want to come and speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hold on, before we take a vote, I do have a comment that I would like to make. Pastor Milton, Reverend Dr. Milton Blunt was my friend, and we spent a lot of time together talking about how we make our city better together. And I can personally say through that interaction, we had some tough conversations sometimes. But one thing I will never, ever forget is what he shared with me, that you're here to serve the people. And don't ever forget that's what you're here for. And so I miss him. I miss the conversations. I miss his friendship. But these things happen in our lives. We can't stay forever. But I want Ms. Claudette to know, and I want the New Mount Olivet family to know, that Milton Blunt meant something to our city. He was a member of the Portsmouth family. And so that's really what I wanted to convey to you tonight. And is there any more discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
The next item, Item UP-25-06. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. Harper Avenue Resolution granting the request of Dee Simpson with Kimley Horn for a use permit to operate a parking facility at 2,000 Harper Avenue in the industrial zoning district. The property is owned by Metro Machine Corp. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as heavy industrial. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. And the resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP-2506, to Dee Simpson to operate a parking facility at 2,000 Harper Avenue."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present? If you would come forward, state your name and address, ma'am. You will have 10 minutes.
Good evening. Devon Simpson with Kimley Horn, business address 4525 Main Street, Virginia Beach. On behalf of the owner, we are requesting a use permit to construct a surface parking lot on Harper Avenue to support operations at the existing General Dynamics NASCO site, also located along Harper Avenue. Amongst other activities, General Dynamics NASCO supports the Navy with fleet maintenance and repair. When a naval ship is in the yard, NASCO needs to have adequate parking in order to support the ship's personnel. Their current parking supply limits the size of ships they are able to support. With the construction of this new parking lot, the facility will be able to expand their naval support to include the maintenance and repair of larger vessels. As part of the parking lot construction, there will be two access points. Both will be ingress and egress along Harper Avenue, and each will have a right turn lane entering each access point. A sidewalk will also be constructed that will extend approximately a quarter mile from the proposed parking lot site to the existing General Dynamics NASCO facility on Harper Avenue. So that sidewalk will be along Harper Avenue. We have completed a traffic impact analysis assessing the increase in traffic due to the additional personnel that will be visiting the site. That analysis has been reviewed and approved by city staff, and as part of that analysis, we'll be conducting those two right turn lanes entering the parking lot. And then we will also be making off-site improvements at the intersection of Harper Ave. and Lee Ave., which will include delineating, so striping, a separate right turn and through left turn lane there today. It's just a single lane, but enough pavement width to stripe two separate ones. So delineating those separately will allow some better traffic flow at the intersection. So we thank you for your consideration. We are happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions for the applicant from my colleagues on council? Seeing none, ma'am? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, you are welcome to do so. Please come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, Item C, UP-25-07. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. West Norfolk Road Resolution granting, excuse me, granting the request of R. Hartman on behalf of City Switch for a use permit to construct a freestanding telecommunications tower at Zero West Norfolk Road in the general residential zoning district. The property is owned by 4740 Cell Tower LLC. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. The resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP-2507, to R. Hartman to construct a freestanding telecommunications tower at Zero West Norfolk Road."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Rick Hartman, and my business address is 5845 Wide Waters Parkway, East Syracuse, New York, 13057. So I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and City Switch, which is a tower company, is proposing to construct a 195-foot monopole telecommunications tower. Verizon will be the first carrier on the site. Currently, as you can see, the parcel right now is, it's mostly woods. There's nothing else, nothing else on the parcel. We are proposing to construct a driveway off of Old Coast Guard Road. It will be a blacktop driveway leading back to the site, about a 20-foot-long driveway leading back to a fenced-in wood fence compound, and we are leasing approximately 3,600 square feet from the landowner. Those are the basics of the, you know, the site and what we're proposing to do. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
I think my question is for...
So if you could address the question to Mr. Carter and so that Mr. Carter can call forward.
I think it starts out with...
If your question is for a staff member, Mr. Carter, that's who you want to go to.
Thank you, sir. My question starts out with asking the fall area, it's 100, and how many is tall feet?
195.
195. And that fall area, if I was to draw 195 circle around this property, would be outside the property? Is that correct?
Well, it's definitely outside of the lease area. I would have to double-check if it's outside of the property itself.
We had a, Mr. Manager, we had a, I had a piece of property in Suffolk that we were constructing a tower on, and the restrictions limited us to, the fall area had to be within the property that it was. So that's where my question goes. Do we have a building zoning code that covers, or are we relying on state to cover this? Because I saw this preliminary, and I didn't see any of that information presented.
I...
You have the floor, Mr. Manager.
Thanks, sir, but I would prefer if our professional would give... Do you have an answer for that, or do we need to defer that question?
Thank you, Mr. Carter. I don't have an answer for it. I believe Mr. Miller, our assistant building official, is present.
Okay. Mike, do you have a, can you address this now? Come up forward.
Please come to the microphone, sir.
The question is the fall radius of the tower. Is it, is it going to, if it were to fall, would it be maintained inside the footprint of the property?
I don't know at this point, based on what's shown here.
Okay. And if, and if, do we have any regulations concerning that particular item?
Not right now. I'm not aware of one off the top of my head. It's the, the regulations on communication towers and communication buildings differ from the everyday building code.
Understood.
So it's a little different type of thing to look up. But I can research it this week and give you a report back on it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The reason for my concern was that fall area might impact building on adjacent properties.
Yes.
And would those other property owners have some restrictions because of that, that they didn't anticipate for this hearing?
Let me check into it.
Sir, 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 do you have a response for that, the answer to the question?
I do. So, and it's, it's a fair question. There, there are no structures within 200 feet. In fact, the closest structure is probably 400 to 500 feet away. You know, our, our site is, the nearest residence is over 600 feet away. So from a, from a fall zone perspective, we're not going to land on, on any structures.
Oh, currently, but what I'm concerned about is should somebody else want to build within that radius? Would they be restricted is, is where I'm concerned.
Sir, not, not for you, but for my colleague. That's not a part of the discussion under the use permit. So if there's another discussion, we could have that at another time. But the item we're dealing with today is the use permit for the tower. That's what we're dealing with today. So do you have any other questions regarding the use permit for the tower?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing item. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item UP-25-08D. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this public hearing item?
Yes, sir. Victory Boulevard Resolution granting the request of Kay Owen for a use permit to develop a multifamily dwelling at 4054 Victory Boulevard in the mixed, excuse me, general mixed-use zoning district. The property is owned by Varsity Development LLC. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial use. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. And the actual resolution granting, excuse me, a resolution granting a use permit, UP-2508, to Kay Owen to construct and operate a total of not to exceed 144 multifamily dwelling units at 4054 Victory Boulevard.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have the applicant present. Ma'am, if you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes. I mean, 10 minutes, excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Erin Carter. Address 5222 Forest Hill Drive. And I want to say good evening to the rest of council members and the city manager and staff. I am one of the co-founders of Varsity Development. The other co-founder is Dorian Finney Smith, who, as you know, is a native sign of Portsmouth, who has went to go do great things. We purchased this property with the desire to do something to uplift the city. We're currently seeking a use permit for multifamily to construct 144 apartments located at this site. The apartment complex will be market-rate housing that will feature one, two, and three bedrooms, with more than 50% being two bedrooms. As you guys know, this nation is currently in a housing crisis. Every city, every state, you know, across the country, we're all dealing with housing issues. You know, the lack of affordability, the lack of just products to offer everyday citizens. And we're hoping that this could be just a drop in the bucket. We know it won't solve the crisis across the nation, but in Portsmouth, we're hoping to do great things. I did want to highlight some of the economic impact this project will have. It will provide more than 250 construction jobs with more than a $15 million payroll. And it will also, as you guys know, this property has sat vacant as long as probably I've been alive. We saw Tom Moll get torn down, but this property sat vacant. And for many years, it was owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, which the city did not get any taxes from because it was a government entity. But I happily say that it's back on a tax roll. And we're just hoping tonight, with approval of the use permit and construction of this project, that we'll be able to even increase more of our tax obligation to help this fine city. I'm just asking each and every one of you to support this project. As you know, this is being led by two hometown natives of Portsmouth pouring back into their city. I don't think, you know, during my lifetime, we have ever seen somebody come back and, you know, try to uplift the city. It's because we believe in this city. We believe Portsmouth is the greatest city. I'll argue in the world. Look at our waterfront. But I also want to highlight that we're not just, we're not alone. We have a team of experts that are standing right beside me in, in the audience that is being led by Breeden Company. And we also have Kimley Horn as our engineers and RBA architects as our architect. And I did want to address early on that the surrounding businesses and, you know, next door is the Lowes. Lowes has been wonderful, very excited that this project is coming to the city because that area sits vacant and I hate to say it, but it has created somewhat of a problem with homeless people, you know, trying to live behind the Lowes and even on the property. So by developing this, we hope to, you know, lessen those issues. But they are in agreement of this project, being very supportive. We're actually talking right now more engineering and technical stuff in terms of some boundaries and buffers that we're going to place across this property. But I ask each and every one for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues, from my colleagues for the applicant? Okay. So, so I do have a couple of questions. I did read in the notes that, that you all, I guess, had conversations with the schools, and increasing enrollment will come from, from the development perhaps. What, what amenities do you have at this particular complex that will meet the needs of families?
Well, there is a clubhouse that would be on the property that will have a computer lab in there as well, and have free Wi-Fi, kind of like a coffee café lounge that, you know, if students needed a place to kind of do homework. I mean, I know me and Dorian's even one of our ideas was to even like maybe have like a tutoring service that could be provided. But ultimately, Mayor, we don't know how many students we will have in this property. I don't think no one right now could tell us how many students that will live in this property. But that's kind of like a future-to-do thing. But it will have some amenities as a clubhouse and fitness center.
Very good. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Yes. Thank you for being here tonight to share with us the details of the development. My, my question is, what are the price points of the units?
Ken Owen here with Breeden Company. So we do have one, two, and three-bedroom units. The ones currently, with the current market conditions, would be at $14.75 a month. Two bedrooms are right at the $2,000 mark. And three-bedroom units would be probably $2,800 at this point, is where we're at.
So, so all the units are market rate?
Yes. Yes, they are.
So there's nothing indexed to income?
No.
Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
Well, thank you both for the presentation, and you may be seated at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry. I, I neglected to do that. You can come up in a minute, but we have some registered speakers. We have two registered speakers. Excuse my, my faux pas there. Our first registered speaker is Mr. House. David House? Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
I'm David House. I live in the Simonsdale District of Portsmouth. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So in looking at the, at the request... Yes, sir.
We can hear you. Thank you, sir.
So in looking at this request, they talked about it was 144 units. But in the use permit, it says, "The use permit request is seeking approval for up to 240 units" in their actual request. So we're looking at, so is this a bait and switch where they're telling us now it's 144, but on their actual use permit, it says 240? So if we're talking about that, so we're talking about 240, so that's an increase of 144 additional parking places that, that, that property will not support. So with 144 units, Portsmouth, the Portsmouth City School System says that roughly 40% of the units will have at least two kids. So that's 57 units, so that means that there's 114 kids in a two, with, in a two-family home. And then, single-family could be 30 or 40 more, so we're looking at 150 kids or more. So if we make that 240-unit development, that means we could have upwards of 235 kids. So the activity area shown in the project drawn does not support the activities for 100 to 150 kids. So where are they going to be? They're going to be in the local businesses nearby. So the property has a flagpole or a panhandle design, and this area cannot be used for calculating the land area, and thus it reduces the property from the 6.2 to 5.3 acres. So the developer states that a formal impact, traffic impact analysis was not needed. The developer states, "Traffic generation, generation is expected to adequately accommodate the existing transportation network, and no adverse impacts on surrounding roadways or intersection is anticipated." So how will public transportation support this? What about our schools and our schoolkids? How, how are our buses come in and out of that facility since it's a narrow area for egress and ingress? VDOT requires a notification and a formal review process for all new housing developments. If you look on page four, the vehicle access for the Victory Crossing is from Victory Boulevard. Each side has seven lanes of traffic in each direction. Two lanes turn opposite direction, one turns directly into Victory Crossing to the complex or to Elmhurst Avenue to Wawa's. So after, after leaving the intersection, the road transitions into three lanes and then lane, then down, down to two lanes later. So let's talk about traffic flow at Missy Elliott Boulevard, which is Portsmouth Boulevard and Greenwood Drive. As all vehicles approach the Lowes intersection, all traffic stops at a three-way stop sign intersection. So that means stop, go, you're going to have to rotate trying to get vehicles in and out. So stormwater management. So stormwater management will be handled on-site via one of two approaches. This is on page five. An underground stormwater retention system or surface detention system. So the problem is, that's not shown on the drawing at all. Anywhere in that, that picture with the green space right there? So that's the only place available, and that's the 13% open space that's on the drawing. If you go to page nine, they talk about the clubhouse and amenity. So what type of playground outside will be in the, in the amenity area for kids? There's no, no listing about what kind of playground, what kind of activity, what kind of slides or anything is going to be out there. So we're talking between 100, 100 and 150 kids. So that's going to be a big, big impact. So let's talk about safety and vehicular traffic. With a projected of 100 to 150-plus children living on the property, what happens when bicycles are introduced into the property? Okay? Children do not know or obey the rules, and they will be weaving in and out of the adjacent shopping center parking areas, driving pathways, and the four-lane road. So if you go to the next page, page seven, this is a protect, protected drive area. This is actually easement on, on the property that's listed in there. If you go to page, page nine, so this is the conceptual building drawn that does not match that right there. Everywhere you see, there's three, three staircases on every building. Building one, type one, and building type two. On the, on the design, it shows you only two stairways or staircases. So the pictorial that we have that we're looking at doesn't even match what they're showing on the, on the drawing. And when you go to the L-shaped drawing, it's almost like it's a 45-degree angle. So one should be a long L and one should be a short L.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Daniel House. Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Daniel House. I live in City, Portsmouth. I want to draw your attention to the concept up there. It says that the building is going to be 60 feet tall, and below that, it's going to say, says four stories. Above it, if you can see the line at the top of the, where the parking area is, that's the line for the stormwater easement. So you've got 28 parking spaces that are designated storm easement. If, if, on the, the, next to the last page, or the last page I have it, can I walk up to the screen to show you? Is that permissible? Can I walk up to the screen?
You can walk up to the screen, sir.
Okay. So you've got a, you've got a, a Virginia Power easement that comes right through here and comes over here that's not on, on the plot. Okay? Right coming down through here, you've got, you've got a stormwater easement that comes out right here that's on this last and second page on that from the previous construction for the storage unit. This doesn't have any of the easements that, that are required on the site application plan whatsoever. So I really don't know how it got past planning. But the, the main thing is, is I went, and I got a copy of the deed yesterday. It's, it's got an 80-page instrument, and that instrument says that no building shall exceed one story. So we're talking about approval of a four-story building. That's why no building on that complex in the shopping center is above one story because PRJ has already established that it can't exist. And it says, "No building shall be higher than 55 feet tall." That already, that already knocks it out of the ballgame. It's 60 feet tall, and, and the instrument for the deed says it's not allowed. So let's go to page two, talk about the easement. So on the left hand, on the right-hand side, it says it's a 20-foot setback. But in the OEA, the OEA says it has to be a 30-degree, I mean, a 30-foot setback from Lowes boundary. So that doesn't meet the requirements of the OEA. Additionally, we're talking about easements. So you've got VEP code, you've got stormwater, and you've got the flagpole. So that decreases the area by 3.24 acres, which means that it's only 3, 3.025 acres of available acreage for building once you, once you subtract the easements. And if you multiply that by the 32 dwelling units listed in the code, that only allows 96 units, not 144. So we've already talked about, we lost 28 spots that are in, that are in the drainage easement that aren't allowed. There's 100 units, 100, over 200 on that, and city code says if you have 100 or more parking spots, every six spot has to have a designated pedestrian walkway. So you're going to lose another 17 spots on that property, okay, due, due to pedestrian easements. And it also says in 40.2-203C1I, says, "Nothing except grand, 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 excuse me, ground cover shall be planted or installed within any underground utility drainage easement or within five feet of any underground utility." So that means anything that's over top of any of those buildings, none of the amenities, building one, building two, nothing can be there because it's over top of the existing easement. This is all in the city code. I don't know how it passed planning, and, and they didn't catch it. And again, like I said, the building club, clubhouse, the trash compactor. The trash compactor is listed in the front left corner of the property, okay? That's in violation of the city code. City code says that you can't have any trash receptacles in the front, front corners of the properties. So where are you going to put it? It can't be there. It's got to be in the back. Okay? So we talked about buffer. The applicant says that it doesn't intend to have any walls or anything and fencing. But 40.2301 says, "The perimeter vehicle use area landscaping strip shall be a continuous opaque visual screen." So you have to have it around the parking areas for the perimeter. And it also says, says that, that "The following development shall provide buffers around the entire perimeter of the envelopment instead of around the building." And that's for multi-building units. So that whole perimeter has to have screening around it by trees or some other method. It just can't be out in the open like they're proposing. Plus, you've got, I used to work at Lowes. You've got, and I'm, I'm going to... You've got, and I'm going to finish.
Sir?
Yep.
Wrap it up.
I will, I will. But you've got all these kids in the amenities areas, which is directly beside the Lowe's customer service for the contractors. And you've got all that traffic there, and kids running around, and unfortunately, parents are going to let the kids run, and that's what kids do. But you've got no, I mean, and it's going to be an issue there next to Lowe's.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this item, ma'am, please come forward. It's your turn to speak on the item. Thank you for your patience. State your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Sure, my name is Brenda Porter-Rockwell. I live at 1701 Atlanta Avenue. And my question is a pretty simple one, it's directed to you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Would it be appropriate for you to ask the applicant to repeat the proposed, and I hear that it is market value, just proposed at this time, all theoretical, proposed numbers for one, two, and three-bedroom units? To just repeat those numbers?
Sure, I think I wrote them down.
Okay, can you repeat those out loud?
I'm not speaking for the applicant, but, but the, but the numbers that I wrote down was for a one-bedroom, I think it was 1475. For a two-bedroom, it was 2,000. And for a three-bedroom, it was 2,800.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted that for my presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Once again, this is a public hearing. You can come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the homework that David House and Dan House have done. Mr. City Manager, reviewing the application package, condition six says, "The development shall be constructed in compliance with applicable codes, ordinances, and regulations of federal, state, and local government, and all required licenses and permits will be obtained and remain in effect during operation of the development." I assume that condition assures that during site plan review, the applicable issues will be reviewed and resolved.
Manager Carter, you have the floor, sir.
The process that we're evaluating today is a zoning permit. What we're, what this board is being asked to do is, is this a good use for this property? There are subsequent things that has to happen after this vote is either yes or no that will pertain to all of those things that have been addressed today. This is not that time. The only thing that you're being asked today is, is this a good use for this property? Site, the site plan process, and there's a, there's a couple of statements, I think it's five and six, that kind of talks about the agreement with PRHA and all of the rules and regulations that has to be. A zoning vote yes or no does not alleviate any rules that's applied to that property. All you're saying is, hey, we think this is a good use of this property. If, so if you say yes, all of those rules still apply. All those things that have to happen still have to happen. Your vote can't change those things, nor can somebody else do something that changes what your vote has been tonight about zoning. So those two things on separate paths there.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Attorney, you have the floor.
I also want to reiterate for the applicant and those concerned that there's an ordinance for 40-2-200A2 that indicates, and I'll quote, "That the ordinance shall not be deemed to interfere with, abrogate, annul, or otherwise affect any easements, covenants, or other agreements between parties, except that no such easement covenant or other agreement shall abrogate, annul, or otherwise affect the party's obligation to comply with the restrictions, requirements, and other terms of this ordinance." In sum, it says, "Regardless of what this body and what we've decided with the ordinance, those private property rights are those of the parties, and we have no effect one way or another on that. Compliance is always the standard, and that is what this body is proceeding with." Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. And sir, if you state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Absolutely. Tom Rettenauer, RBA Architects, business address 432 South Battlefield Boulevard, Chesapeake, Virginia. We are the architects for the project. So I wanted to go over a couple of the items that we heard from Mr. House. First off, in regards to the school-aged children.
Sir, could you please come closer to the microphone so we all can hear you?
So in regards to school-aged children, a typical math that you do for something that, depending on if it's a one, two, or three-bedroom, you use different calculations to calculate this out. And just quickly doing this, the actual calculation for this site would be between 28 and 37 students. So I just wanted to make sure that people didn't understand that there were going to be 200 kids running around this neighborhood at this point. In regards to the actual number of units, we are planning for a maximum of 144. We are not asking for the 240, we are asking for the 144, just wanted to make sure everybody understood that at this point. In regards to the parking and the easements and other issues, of course, this is conceptual nature at this point, so as we go through the process, we'll be developing relationships with people that have the easements, and we'll be working through the parking requirements with them. There have been some easements that have been actually removed during, actually in the middle of the site, so they no longer exist. But as, Mayor, you said, we would work through the process with the city, calculating everything, making sure that it meets all the requirements at this point. In regards to the actual site area, and I have several notes here, but I won't get into them, but we've calculated everything correctly as per the city requirements at that point. So we are available for any additional questions.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you would come forward and speak on this public hearing item, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Joanne Clark, Churchland area. I did not plan on speaking tonight and addressing this agenda, but I feel as a taxpayer and for every other citizen that might be listening or concerned, I think it's incumbent upon each and every one of you to understand how a large complex affects every aspect of this city. It adds to the infrastructure of traffic, sewer, water, roads, and especially our investment of $83 million to schools. It is redundant to think that after the fact that you've approved something, that you, that people should understand how many children are actually going to be related to the construction of this building, the ages and what schools would be necessary to hold them and educate them. We should have and demand a representative from schools here that tells us through calculation of applications, how many kids, what their ages are, and will they be going, what schools will have room for them before anybody approves a zoning. Now, that's just me. I know that this has been done in the past at other cities, but for some reason, we've evolved to, all after the fact, we're going to do what is legal and prompt. I can tell you, as a homeowner myself, that doesn't work. They are still in negotiation with the houses in my backyard about what kind of stormwater issues will be regulated and how they'll be finalized, and it's 10 years after the property has been begun and every tree and shrub was removed. And I'm still waiting for the 90 trees. So instead of doing this backwards, bring it forward. Have somebody from schools that can tell us what is going to be generated, what the true cost to the citizens of this development will be. Yes, we want Portsmouth to go forward and to be productive, but we want them to be fiscally responsible, and I hold every one of you responsible for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Ken Owen, again, just to set the record straight.
Please, please come up to the microphone, sir, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Ken Owen, Green Construction. Set the record straight, we have Crawford here, right across the street. We have 132 units and a total of five children are residents at that community. As far as burden on the community, this property will generate 250 construction jobs. It will, four permanent jobs with annual salaries of $250,000 combined. There would be $400,000 of annual real estate taxes generated, and there will also be $50,000 in business tax generated. So that's what this project will bring to the community.
Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the comments particularly related to children. That is, of course, something that we want to consider when we're building. And I'm looking at the notes, and we've had this conversation before about communication between the city and the schools, and there is a note in our package that says that the schools department finds that the development would have little to no impact. So that is useful information that we've gained from the planning department, and useful that the schools are engaged with us in that conversation, because that is something that we've talked about in our liaison meetings. And so, thank you to planning for providing that. But I do agree that this is an important conversation to have as we build, that we do make spaces for children. So thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Well, Councilwoman Bryant just said what I was going to respond, but I think it was a fair question, and we are talking about more communication and transparency with our citizens. And so, the planning, like Councilwoman Bryant said, the planning department does circulate this information through all departmentals, and department, in our city, including engineering, treasurer, assessor, like schools, parks, and rec, and so forth. And each department has a chance to comment on the impact of development. But again, as a citizen, that's a great question, and we just have to be more transparent about those comments and letting the citizens know that that information is out there as well. So, great comment, Ms. Clark, but the schools did comment on this particular application, but great consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item, is he sure? This item is adopted 6-1.
Thank you, ma'am. And that concludes our public hearing items for this evening. We will now move into our next agenda item, which is City Manager's Report. Item 25-253, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting settlement funds in the amount of $194,168.12 from opiate settlements and appropriating said amount in the FY 2026 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use by BHS for approved abatement purposes and defined by the Virginia Opiate Fund and settlement allocation MOU.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 25-254, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting settlement funds in the amount of $150,714.13 from the PFAS settlement with the 3M Company and appropriating said amount in the FY 2026 Public Utilities Fund for use by the Department of Public Utilities for water supply testing and treatment and other authorized uses under the terms of the settlement.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We do have a request from our city attorney for the floor. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted the council to know that this was one of our successful affirmative litigation matters that's led by my deputy, Derek Challenger, who's here in the chamber. This is one of many checks. We expect to get close to almost a million dollars in funding back to the city for this product's waste in our, in our system. And it's, it's just a telltale sign of the innovation that my office is looking forward to bringing to our community, correcting those things that have affected our community and using these funds hopefully to find a way to prevent future waste in our communities and also to correct those that we have. So I wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you to you and your team for your hard work. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Next item, item 25-255, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $564,882 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said sum in the FY 2026 Grant Fund for use by the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office for the victim witness program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption. Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Our next item, item 25-256, and Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2026 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services by the South Side Regional Hazardous Materials Emergency Response Team.
Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Item 25-257, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $1,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2026 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services in connection with the Radiological Emergency Preparedness Program.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you. That concludes our City Manager's Report. We are now moving to new business. Item 25-258, Boards and Commissions, and Councilman Hugel, do you have any boards and commissions to report?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have one commission reappointment this evening. It's to the History Commission, May Breckenridge, and several new appointments to Boards and Commissions. To the Board of Zoning Appeals, Christian Harris. To the Clean Community Commission, Luis Padilla. To the Community Criminal Justice Board, Genesis Thomas. To the Economic Development Authority, C. Ross Morgan. To the History Commission, Sharon Hoggard, Akayla Chambers, and Sandra Nicholson. To the Parks and Rec Commission, Wilbert Allen. To the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Board, Robert Porter. To the Social Services Advisory Commission, Winford Dozier and Rakim Reed. And to the Wetlands Board, John Lifsey. Those are our appointments tonight, Mr. Mayor. Additionally, I want to point out that, to our folks who may be watching, we have three boards and commissions that currently have open positions. The Southampton Roads Disability Services Board, the Newport Development Authority, and the Broadband Authority. So if you're interested in serving on any of those boards or commissions, there are current openings that we're looking for qualified candidates. And then, in anticipation of coming to the end of the calendar year, we'll have some board and commission members who potentially will be rolling off. And so, now- Uh, and so now's a good time to start thinking about how you might want to serve the community, uh, starting in January. Uh, we'll have, uh, a position on the SIPSA Board, uh, and, uh, and we may have needs for Economic Development Authority and Planning Commission. So if any of those, uh, appeal to you, uh, please, uh, consider visiting the city website, uh, filling out an application, uh, and submitting, uh, your interest, uh, to us so that we can consider you for future service to the community through the Boards and Commissions, uh, process. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hugel. Our next item, item twenty-five.
Need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
I'm sorry, guys.
I didn't mean to woo you.
No, 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 we had a motion. We need a second. We have a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item twenty-five dash two-five-nine, items submitted by council members. Do we have any items submitted by council members? Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask that we get a report back on the, uh, tower zoning, uh, building, uh, do we have ordinances that cover it? And I wanted to ask for.
I have that as a note already.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, at the last meeting, I forgot to make mention, um, about the great event that happened in the city of Portsmouth a few weeks ago, and that was hosted by the Portsmouth Power Boat Association. Um, so it was great for them to be able to come to our city park, um, to see so many people come out and that were enthused by water, um, boat activities, uh, to see the water racing, um, also having food trucks out there. Uh, it was great to see our city park active with so many people out and about. In addition, uh, just a few weeks ago, we had Symphony on the River. Uh, Virginia Symphony came here to the city of Portsmouth and they hosted a wonderful evening on our Elizabeth River in City Park. Um, a lot of people came out, uh, people from the city of Portsmouth, but also people came into Portsmouth, uh, to take part in that evening. And so it's just a great sign of many things to come. Um, and as a proud supporter of the arts, I look forward to seeing more of these types of activities, um, come across our city, um, so that people can enjoy especially our water area that we do have, um, here in the city of Portsmouth. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Bryant, myself, uh, Sunday attended the Reflection Walk, uh, dedication, uh, which is a cancer awareness park located in Port Norfolk on Bayview Boulevard. And kudos to Brian McHugh and the Port Norfolk Civic League. The park was dedicated initially in 2006, but, uh, thanks to the Civic League's, uh, efforts headed up by Mr. McHugh, they've got it, uh, back in pristine condition. Uh, if you haven't been there, it's really a neat, uh, place. The walk is, uh, on the waterfront on, uh, Bayview Boulevard. And they also have bricks that, uh, uh, you can purchase in memory or in honor of, uh, a cancer victim or a cancer survivor. So it's really a neat place and, uh, it was honored to, uh, to be there among the, uh, cancer survivors. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next, uh, um, the next comments will come from Councilwoman Thomas. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just want to say thank you to Mr. Carter for some of the report backs. One thing, I just wanted to make sure we, uh, from our last work session, we had the presentation on the parking meters that we're gonna possibly invest in. And I wanted to make sure you still had on your note to, um, regarding the parking enforcement, um, issue, well, implementation and kind of getting some data behind how we're gonna enforce and what that process looks like while we're doing the investment to change our meters over. Is that still on your list of things, Mr. Carter?
Manager Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. That presentation for you about parking was an initial presentation to get the feel for what this council wanted to, how the council wanted to move forward.
Okay.
So we've taken all those notes away. We're gonna come back with a second presentation about how we plan to implement based on the information we gathered at that meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then, one more thing. Um, I have, just for some citizen input, I've, a few citizens have reached out regarding, um, the request to look at implementing stop signs at some of the busy traffic corners, um, in their neighborhoods as well as speed bumps. And I know we've done that in other neighborhoods. What is the process, just for transparency and information to our citizens, uh, to become part of a traffic study and to have that implemented? I know we just recently went through that with another neighborhood. Just wanted to put that out to the public for our citizens that have requested some information.
Sir, you have the floor.
At a future council work session, there is a traffic calming policy that will be presented, similar to what we did about the, the parking, where we present that to you, get some feedback from you about how we've presented it. Does it make, um, make sense to you? Does it suit the needs of our citizens? And if, if that is the case, then we'll bring a policy back for, uh, approval. But there is a traffic calming policy already being, uh, created to address all of these traffic calming issues.
So if a group of citizens right now feel there's a traffic emergency based on some high-traffic areas and high kids playing in that area, how do they get that concern addressed now, or do we have to wait for this policy to go?
Contact our Traffic Engineering Department. There are warrants that, that they will always look at to see if something is, um, just for transparency's sake, when someone requests something that far as traffic calming is concerned, uh, there are regulations that we have to follow about whether or not we can put a stop sign there, whether or not we can put a, a speed, um, hump or something like that. With, the first thing is always gonna be a traffic study. So if they, if they want, if you have somebody that wants something now, make that request now. We'll do the traffic study.
And they request that through our on, on, online?
Through our traffic, uh, no, I don't, there, there's no mechanism for that right now because we haven't had anything like this in our, in the past. There's no mechanism. If you want to have a traffic study done, contact our engineering department. Traffic engineering is part of our engineering department. They will set up a traffic study for you. If all this fails, call my office. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Two things to share. Uh, Thursday is September the 11th, uh, and so at 11 o'clock at High Street Landing, we will have a 9/11, uh, remembrance, uh, ceremony. Uh, and then, uh, next week, Tuesday, the 16th of September, uh, we, we mentioned at our last meeting, uh, several of us visited Greenville, South Carolina. Uh, on the 16th of September, uh, at the Portsmouth Sportsplex, uh, we intend to review for public consumption, uh, feedback from that, that Greenville trip. And so, uh, if you're interested in hearing, uh, what we saw in Greenville and, uh, and how that may, uh, influence, uh, the direction that we have, uh, in, here in, in Portsmouth, please come join us, uh, 16 September, 5:30 PM at the Portsmouth Sportsplex. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor, then Councilwoman Bryant.
Thank you. Yes, this past Saturday, we had the Pastor's Pray for Portsmouth event. It happens once, um, on the first Saturday of every month. Uh, it's a powerful, powerful meeting, uh, where we get together and we just pray for Portsmouth. If you believe in the power of prayer, we'd love to have you join us, uh, Saturday, first Saturday of every month. Most of the council was there at this past one, including the city manager and this, and the police chief. It was a very nice meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, wanted to thank Coach Brick from Brick House Boxing for the invitation to come out to his, um, they hosted a boxing match at Effingham YMCA. It was a very cool event. I have never been to a boxing match before, so I enjoyed getting to see that and see people from other communities across the state really come out to, um, participate and watch. Also, support Portsmouth Public Art, which is responsible for many of the large murals that you'll see across the city, is hosting an art and yard sale at the Hill House Museum, which is on North Street, and that is this Saturday from nine to two. It's a great opportunity to come out, come down to the farmer's market, walk around a little bit. In the fall, it's beautiful out, um, and, um, support this group that is attempting to bring more public art to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And a couple of things, uh, I'd like to add real quick. Want to thank our city staff, Parks and Rec team, uh, for another wonderful season of Sunset Thursday. Uh, it's always a positive opportunity to bring out the community to celebrate with good music, good interaction, and just have a good time. So, kudos to your team, Mr. Carter, for once again delivering on a wonderful Sunset Thursday season. Want to, want to thank them for that. Also, want to acknowledge, last Friday, we had the privilege of having Good Morning America come to the city of Portsmouth. Some of you may have seen that presentation. It was actually, uh, in support of our wonderful nonprofit here in the city, Mercy Chefs, who has delivered over three, well, 30 million meals since inception across the world. And you know, these folks do a lot of work to help people. And on last Friday morning, the city had an opportunity to show out, volunteers showed up in a big way to support Mercy Chefs and the work they do in our community. Want to thank the founders of Mercy Chefs, Gary and Anne LeBlanc, for all of their dedication and work in our community and their team. They do a phenomenal job and we're fortunate to have a group like Mercy Chefs here in the city of Portsmouth. And so, that's all we have for items submitted by council. We'll move to the next item, which is item twenty-five dash two-six-zero, report on pending items. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, in your package today, you do have the report back from the last meeting. Uh, the only thing I want to add to that is our Government One-on-One classes will begin on next Monday. Unfortunately, it opened and closed quickly. Uh, that, uh, that group has, uh, it was filled out pretty quickly, so, uh, there is a waiting list. Uh, we're starting to contact people now. If there are ones that drop out, we'll move people up from the waiting list. But on Monday, um, September the 15th is the first evening class. So, thank everybody that signed up for that. Thank everybody who was the alumni of that, and we look forward to another, another great season of, of Government One-on-One. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. And I want to acknowledge Mr. Carter for his vision on the Government One-on-One program. It's really an opportunity for our citizens to learn about how their city works, and most importantly, uh, from the interaction and building of the relationships of the other folks in the room, I think we all can agree that we become better informed, but we also potentially become ambassadors for our city. And it's always good to have knowledge. I want to thank you for leading that effort and bringing that, that wonderful program online. Next, we are gonna move to item twenty-five dash two-six-one, which is non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red, red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our first speaker tonight is Ms. Lakeisha Austin. Ms. Austin, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, um, I don't want no trouble, I just want a parking spot. So that's why I'm here. I'm basically, my name is Lakeisha Austin. My address is 1055 Lecky Street, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23704. So, um, the, the problem is, is there's no assigned parking spaces where we live and there's off, off-the-street parking. And, um, there's a church that's, you know, that, that's literally right beside us with the house that's connected to it and that, and that is the driveway there. But that driveway, from my understanding from the landlord, that driveway belongs to that church in that house. So, um, I done had the police called on me and everything, so I'm just trying to get a parking space. I have a husband that's disabled. We do have a handicap decal. I came up here to speak to somebody about getting a handicap space, and the first thing she said was, no, they're not gonna approve it because they don't, we don't approve handicap spaces in driveways. So, she didn't even want to hear our side of the story, so she just said that, um, here fill out the application, but they're not gonna approve it. So, I'm standing in front of y'all to see if we can't have that approved.
Ms. Austin, I'm, I'm gonna turn it over, I'm gonna ask Manager Carter to, to speak with you on that matter?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a young lady sitting to your left.
Okay.
Would you, uh, give her your contact information? Uh, we can try and look into this for you. We're, it sounds like we're talking about parking on private property though, right?
Um, well, it's not private prop, property. We just have street parking. There's no assigned parking spaces for nobody. It's, it's basically the city.
Okay, I see what's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah. Give your information to Ms. Hoag. She's sitting right, uh, on the corner there.
Okay.
And we'll contact you next week on, or this week on this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Gary Behena. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Manager Carter, your honor. Um, my name is Gary Behena. I live here in Old Town, uh, and I just wanted to come and give my annual, uh, recap of the Portsmouth Paddle Battle. Um, as many of you probably have heard by now, we had a little hiccup, um, early on Saturday morning. Uh, all of the equipment, everything, our merchandise, computers, everything for the Portsmouth Paddle Battle was stolen, um, out from, in front of, uh, my home. Um, I'm not here to complain about that. I'm not here to, to say anything bad about Portsmouth because what happened was absolutely amazing. If any of you've seen the reports from Wavy, uh, over the last 24 hours, it's now being referred to as the Miracle on High Street. Um, I woke up the police chief at four in the morning. I woke up our mayor, who's still willing to talk to me, at four in the morning. Um, our mayor woke up Jim Collins, um, at four in the morning. Um, and by about seven or eight o'clock in the morning, we had people who hadn't even volunteered for the event showing up and asking, what could they do to make it happen? Um, the mayor was very clear to me at four in the morning that there was no way I was going to cancel this event. Um, and he said, this city would come together and would make it happen, and this city came together and made it happen. Um, I'm very grateful to the city. I'm very grateful to everybody who volunteered. I'm very grateful to you, to Jim, uh, to Chief Jenkins. The truck was recovered, um, by about nine-ish in the morning. Um, so for any of you who have any doubts about our flock camera system, put them out of your mind. They found our truck. Um, at the end of the day, what was stolen, and if any of you see any drunk kayakers, the kayaks and our booze, we recovered pretty much everything else. Um, but we are very, very grateful. We have had, um, we actually had a record turnout, um, for the event. We had a record number of people who walked up and signed up for the event who hadn't pre-registered for the event. We had a record number of people from the Coast Guard and the Navy who turned out for the Challenge Cup. Um, it was beyond all of our hopes and dreams. Um, I don't know that we're gonna make any money after we reimburse Hoffler Creek and everybody else for the stuff that was stolen, but that's okay. Um, what, what I said yesterday, uh, when Wavy wanted to do an interview, was that this was community. This was Portsmouth. This was. This was Portsmouth Proud. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir, for a great program. I believe the children enjoyed it, too. Our next speaker is Mr. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I want to shout out Gary and the Friends of the Shipyard Museum, but but really, from the very beginning, the the paddle battle idea was Gary's. And how many years now is this? Five years, fifth year running? So so can't be done without volunteers, and especially with the circumstances this past weekend. But it also can't be done without the vision and the drive that that Gary and his wife Jeannie provide to, Gary and his wife Jeannie provide to this this effort. So so Gary, to you and and Jeannie, thanks so much for for being the the motive for us to make this go.
You're here. Our next speaker, Mr. David House. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
I'm still David House, and I still live in Portsmouth. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So as you know, I'm an advocate for speaking out for issues that are impacting the city. As you know, I received some information back recently, and I requested a do-over because the information that that was looked at was only part of the picture. So on some of the issues that I received back from from the city manager, I'm requesting that we have some some other follow-up information on that if if we could. So somebody reached out to me about an issue at the Lexington Heights Apartments, and I'm going to cite the the Visibility Clearance at Intersections Code. It's 32-31. And basically says that no material impediment to visibility shall be placed, allowed, erect, or maintained on any parcel as to restrict the site distance at any intersection of a public street. And it talks about below the minimum required by the VDOT standards for for the situation, situated intersection. So so VDOT says that you can, the eye height of a person driving is 3.5 feet, so the object height is 2.5 feet. And if you look at this this diagram, so we're talking about Deep Creek Boulevard, so which is a 35 mile an hour thoroughfare. So a car stopped at that intersection. The line sight visibility has to be 14 and a half feet from the curb, and it can't be any closer than 390 feet from that intersection. So if you look, if you look at the next page, these are the housing, the two housing developments that have fences in the front. The first one is 390 feet, and the second one is 285 feet. So based on the VDOT, based on the city code saying the it has to be the minimum VDOT standard, there can be no fence along that corridor in front of those apartments. And it talks about what a site distance means. It says intersection site distance means a site distance required at an intersection to allow the driver of a stop vehicle sufficient view of the intersecting highway to decide whether to enter or cross the intersecting highway. If you go to the the next pages in the back, page four shows the complex, and on page five, it shows you the the fence that is constructed. So I took these pictures sitting in my vehicle, and you cannot see ongoing traffic at that property. So this this fence is between the curb and the sidewalk, which means it's on city right of way. So the so the the complex has has installed a fence, and I believe it's, I believe it's five foot tall. But like I said, if you look at the pictures, sitting sitting there, you you can't see ongoing traffic. And and I think something needs to be addressed because, I mean, somebody, somebody reached out to me and said, hey, you know, I go through that intersection all the time, and I'm having to almost drive out into the oncoming traffic in order to see past the past the the fence that's been installed. So I'm just bringing it to you to your attention for for consideration. And like I said, bring it to your attention about my do-overs that that we submitted to the city, requesting, you know, some answer back from what I submitted back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Brenda Porter-Rockwell. Ms. Rockwell, ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening again. My name is Brenda Porter-Rockwell, and this time my concern is personal. I live at 1701 Atlanta Avenue, and I have noticed that there are these pop-up shantytowns and hangout spots for, I don't know if they are homeless and or mentally ill. I've seen these people walking up and down Randolph, shouting at nothing, shouting into the void, crying, having this breakdown. And my concern is that I see this increasing, like disgusting amount of litter and waste. I noticed on Lincoln between Camden and Atlanta, one person, there's a lot on that corner, and the lot, you know, it's empty lot, and this one person is put up a little little spot for himself and has a bucket for waste and a jug of water to bathe. And I I stopped going on my morning walks because I was like, I don't want to see that. I got to go a different way. When I'm going up Randolph toward Effingham, there's another empty lot, and it's a big shady tree spot area, and they hang out there in the street in that little spot there, and and there's just waste debris, and it's starting to trickle down as they walk from Effingham that from Effingham toward Deep Creek. And I'm on the corner lot, so I see it all, and I get all the trash. And I'm wondering, what what is the protocol? Do I report to police? Do I, like, how do I address this?
Manager Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Again, the same young lady we pointed out before. She'll take your information, and we'll do an investigation on that and report back to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. What the issue that Ms. Rockwell just brought up, I think, is a issue that requires a bit of solutions on our part as well. One thing I remember from, I don't know if it was behavioral health care or was it social services, they talked about implementing a mobile unit to go to our neighborhoods where there's maybe higher, you know, maybe drug use or any type of use that Ms. Rockwell is type sort of referring to, to. But the the thing is, our citizens don't have a way to provide those addresses, I mean, other than the C Click Fix, but that would be kind of odd, taking pictures of citizens. So can we, Mr. Carter, I think it would be a good idea for us to add this type of solution to something that we look further into and see what our behavioral health care, social services, or police, how we can coordinate when we are trying to address some of these areas where, you know, people are hanging out in our neighborhoods, you don't feel safe while you're going on walks, there might be higher drug use. We we notice, you know, we know the places, right, in the neighborhoods where this occurs. If we can provide some type of policy and process, just overall solution to address this in our in our neighborhoods in our city. So and wherever the addresses that Ms. Rockwell is providing, that's great, but I think we need another avenue and a solution that we can provide in a broader context to context to all of our citizens as we work to clean up all of our neighborhoods. So I just wanted to put that out there as a as something we add to our list of things when we talk about cleaning up our neighborhoods and our communities. Mr. Carter, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Sharon Anderson. Ms. Anderson, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Attorney Williams, Ms. Clark, Ms. Sherrod, and the Sergeant-at-Arms. I am Sharon D. Anderson, and I am the President of Ebony Heights Civic League. We have now resumed withholding our monthly meetings, and we're kicking off our first meeting with Commonwealth's Attorney Candidate's Forum. So I'm here this evening to remind you all and to invite those that are not aware to please come out on Monday, September the 15th, at New Community Temple, 3615 Taranack Road, Bishop Thomas Way, to hear about how the Commonwealth's Attorney Office runs. So many people just are unaware of what the responsibility of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office is. So as a civic league, we are about informing people, educating people. So I hope that you all will please come out. If you can't come out, please tell a friend to please join the Ebony Heights Civic League meeting this coming up Monday, September the 15th. Doors will open at 6:30. The forum starts at 7:00. So I look forward to seeing many of you there and many of those that are listening via on the internet. Please come out, and I will be a part of the Government One-on-One, but I will miss the 15th, but I will be there the following Mondays. So thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to seeing each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Ms. Serena Mann. Ms. Mann, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Serena Mann, and my property address is 3421 Portsmouth Boulevard, Portsmouth, Virginia. And I am the proud founder of Individuals Making Positive Active Change Together. We are a 501(c)(3) bitside of the city of Portsmouth, and I am also the Vice President for the Wilson Ward Golf Sports Civic League. Tonight, I am up here because I wanted to share our beliefs that we all want to see the community do well, and we all believe that coming together is very important. Over the past year, we have spiraled into a movement called Safe and Sound, and we are committed to addressing the root causes of violence and building healthier and more hopeful futures for all. Over the past year, we have helped over 1,000 students with school supplies to start the school year. We have invested over 375 hours of mentorship pouring directly back into our youth. We have distributed over 1,500 pieces of clothing and over 200 pairs of shoes to families in need, and we have also distributed over 15,000 pounds of food to fight hunger in the communities. These are not just numbers. These are lives and families that have been touched and hope that has been restored. And now, on September 20th, we are preparing for our inaugural Beats and Petals Bicycle Ride slash Walk and Roll and Music Festival that will take place at the Portside Park right beside the Renaissance Hotel. But we cannot do this alone. Back in March, I had submitted a city sponsorship application to the city manager, and we are less than two weeks out from the event, and I still have not received any definitive answers whether the city will or will not support us. This has been very frustrating because, as I've been trying to collaborate with Parks and Rec, they are telling me that they cannot do anything without approval. Yet, they need to know so that they can schedule proper staff to have everything in place if it is approved. So today, I stand before you just to let you know that tonight is just not about a sponsorship. I'm here to ask you for your partnership. I am your ally, and I desire for us to all work together to truly keep the community safe and sound. Portsmouth is already great, so let's work together to make it even greater. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Dolise Whitehurst. Ms. Whitehurst, ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Dolise Whitehurst. I'm at 1237 Beranda Way, Chesapeake, Virginia. I am the widow of the late Honorable Charles B. Whitehurst, Senior. I am standing in front of you with a heavy heart, feel a deep disappointment and sadness to express our feelings regarding the city's decision not to honor our loved one, Charles B. Whitehurst, Senior. His memory is woven into the heavy fabric of your community and is simply heartbreaking to witness that his dedication and contributions go unacknowledged. For decades, Charles gave selfless, offering time, energy, and compassion to those around him. His impact was felt by neighbors, friends, and even strangers touched by his unwavering kindness and commitment. It pains us profoundly to realize that despite all that he has given to the city of Portsmouth, his legacy will not be formally recognized by the city that meant so much to him. We had hoped and thought that the city of Portsmouth would understand the significance of Charles' contributions and the value of commemorating individuals who truly make a difference. The absence of such an honor feels not only disappointing, but also like a missed opportunity to inspire others to celebrate the spirit of community service that Charles had embodied. With all sincerity, we are not asking, and we are not going to beg you to make this decision. Obviously, after eight years and trying consistently to get something to honor Charles, nothing has been done. I reached out in 2017, sent an email to suggest that we have a street named after Charles, and was told that it would be costly in doing so, and that idea was shot down. I then sent several emails and kept asking for suggestions on how I can honor Charles. Nothing was done. After two years after the pandemic, lo and behold, someone was honored in a street naming in 2022. My family and I then sat down with Mayor Shannon in October 22 and explained everything I've been doing to make something happen. You assured me that that would not take another year. A idea came up in the meeting to have a building or park named after Charles. We decided on the building. We submitted the application in 2023, went in front of the Parks and Recreation Committee that night, and they voted ununamously, and were told that the next step finalizing was to go in front of the city council members. One week later, I was informed by phone call that a conflict of interest had arisen regarding the building as another individual had requested to have their loved ones' name assigned to it after our vote. Parks and Recreation Community, excuse me, communicated to me that no additional streets or buildings will be renamed after any more loved ones. We then sat once again, Mayor Glover, and which showed you said that you was going to look into regarding that building situation. Charles' name then came up in the city council meeting in January 2024, and the acting city manager stated that she had something that the family of Charles would love. Councilman Bill Moody, you suggested and said whatever was going to do, you was going to make that happen, was going to go forward to make that happen. However, I did not receive any response to what the city manager has said, despite following up multiple times via emails and telephone calls. I emailed several committee members regarding that, but I never received a follow-up. Then, in August of 2024, a person stood up in front of the council meeting like I'm standing now and stated that she thinks blank blank deserves a street named after her, and the next month, the street was named after this person. I sent several follow-up emails to Mayor and to Councilman Moody, and nothing was done. And then in May of 2025, I was sent via email a program of having a street named and honoring after Charles. I was given this application in May of 2025. After looking over the application, I was informed that I need to select a street where the name could be honored and obtain a petition with signatures from all the businesses on that street. It was given three weeks to submit the information. After submitting my application and all that was needed, I received an email two weeks later stating I needed signatures from the owners of the buildings on the street, not the signatures from the business, not the signatures from the business, and was asked also what connection Charles had to that street. This was a slap in the face. This was a slap in the face. Charles' family and I have observed streets that have been named, not honorary after individuals, but renamed. I'm not saying that they don't deserve one. I'm quite sure that they do. But why hasn't it been done for Charles during the eight years that Charles and the family and I have been making efforts to get this done? We have concluded that the city of Portsmouth has not approved our request on anything and really does not want this to happen. Charles was more than a husband to me. He was a father, a brother, an uncle. He was a pillar of Portsmouth community, a man of integrity, compassion, and quiet strength, and most of remarkable, a remarkable statesman. His contributions, whether through services, mentorship, and plenty of the ones who now sit on the current Portsmouth City and the ones advanced in simply the way he has lifted those around him. He deserves to be honored in a way that future generations can see what kind of man he was done for the city of Portsmouth. Nine years may seem like a long time, but love and legacy do not expire. Although time has passed, our commitment by preserving his legacy has never wavered. We remain grateful to our loved one's legacy, and the family and I will honor him in a way that he truly deserves. I'm truly disappointed in the city of Portsmouth.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Whitehurst, thank you for being here. I share your frustration. If I could make it happen, I would, but council, no member of council can get involved in that process other than stating our support. There's a committee that determines that. I'm a little mystified why that committee approves some that certainly had lesser contributions to the city than Charles Whitehurst. Charles Whitehurst was the first African-American treasurer elected in the city of Portsmouth. He was a Marine who served his country. He was a vice mayor, and he also served on this council for, I believe, three terms. So I'm also mystified and frustrated that we've chosen this committee, and I think we need, we need to know more about this committee and more about the process of honoring streets after individuals. As I sat here tonight, I have no idea. I've heard scuttlebutt on how this committee works, but I can sit here and tell you tonight, I'm not pleased at some of their works. So I want to know something about the process. I don't know if you are aware, but I'm the one that first proposed honoring individuals with an honorary street. But if anybody's deserving of that honor is Charles Whitehurst. So, Mr. Manager, maybe you can schedule a time to enlighten us on how that process works, who the committee members are, how they're appointed, and perhaps their backgrounds. I don't know why it's not like a boards and commission that's, that's appointed by members of council, but I'm not pleased with this at all, Ms. Whitehurst. But thank you for being here. And don't give up the fight, because I'm not either. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was our last speaker for the evening. If there's no other business to conduct for the good of the order, then this meeting is adjourned. I would ask that you all drive safely, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Goodbye.